I guess.
Well, that'll take us to a personal appearance tonight, so we have a representative from Saint, we have probably more than one representative.
We do.
From the Saint Genevieve County Memorial Hospital.
Yes.
To address the board and the mayor, will you come up and tell us who you are?
So, hello.
Hello.
I'm, if you don't mind, I'm gonna read some, from some notes here.
First you have to introduce yourself.
Who are you?
I will. My name is Sarah Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of Human Resources and Support Services at Saint Genevieve County Memorial Hospital, and I'm here with Rita Brumfield, our Chief Nursing Officer at the hospital. So I work in the Administration Office, and I serve on your, on the Senior Executive Team. I've been a part of the community for 11 years, and I'm also on many boards here in Saint Genevieve County. One of them is the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm also on the Saint Genevieve County Community Center Board of Directors, and on the Saint Genevieve Industry Board of Directors. So I am very active, and I look forward to speaking with you today about this very hot, popular topic on Facebook, apparently from last night. So, we come to bring attention and support on recommending the city to adopt an ordinance on non-smoking. I lead this with, "Healthcare has been changing." So in the past, we would treat chronic conditions. Now, our future is promote health and wellness and prevention. So part of this is being proactive. As a healthcare leader, we should take a serious, active role in how we promote a healthy community. And as we've looked at our population health factors, we found alarming statistics during our strategic planning sessions that we've had. Missouri is the sixth highest smoking state. Missouri has the lowest tobacco tax in the United States. Our county health ranking is at 20%, which means 20% of the adult population of Saint Genevieve County currently smokes every day, or most days, and has smoked at least 100 cigarettes in their lifetime. Smoking range in Missouri from anywhere from 17% to 29%. These statistics that I share from you is from a very reputable national research foundation called Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that completes county health rankings across the United States. The county health rankings is not pulled from hospitals' medical records. As a healthcare leader, we can now take a role and bring the attention of the community on these statistics and the prevention. So the hospital is not saying that smokers are bad people, or to eliminate an individual's inability to smoke. Citizens have a right to smoke, and the hospital does not want to take that away from them. They can smoke in their home, in their car, wherever they choose, but the hospital is supporting the 80% of non-smokers that are making that healthy decision. So I ask you, how do we prevent secondhand smoke in Saint Genevieve for those non-smokers? We are asking for the city to take reasonable steps to define public places and distances from entrances at these public places in Saint Genevieve where an individual cannot smoke. We encourage the city to take a look at other city ordinances and state directions on smoking in public places to develop and implement a Saint Genevieve non-smoking ordinance. In closing, the hospital will continue to promote a healthy community by bringing awareness to improve health and wellness of health factors and health behaviors to the attention of the community to prevent potential adverse health outcomes, including secondhand smoke. So that is my statement. I am here available for questions, along with Rita. And I don't know if the aldermen and the mayor have seen also the letter of support from the County Health Department.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And so Sandy Bell and someone from her board is also here.
Well, I think we should look into it.
I appreciate that.
Well, go ahead.
Martin, the appropriate step, I think, would be to have a public hearing that we advertise and hold in a venue that's large enough to accommodate those who might show up. So obviously, you know, it's premature for you to talk about the details.
Right.
Although those details are kind of where the devil lives. So, I mean, there are lots of examples of other communities that have done it, so we won't be reinventing the wheel.
Yes.
And, I don't know, just pick a time that's most convenient for the group, and we'll schedule a hearing.
Yes, sir.
One question I have is, you know, your health rankings is measured at 20%. I guess, you know, one is how do you come up with that percentage and that ranking and stuff? Because somebody who's smoked 100 cigarettes in their lifetime, that's not a very much of a smoker, you know.
So, you bring up a very valid question. You know, we have to go to some source to get these statistics. And so, the county health rankings is a place where this research foundation had reviewed a number of different outcomes on how they got that. I can supply with, to you that information, but it's based off of census data, on information from a telephone surveys, from insurance claims that are processed. I mean, there's a number of different ways that they get to that statistic, but again, I mean, that is something that we have to have a third party give to us. That's not something that we are compiling at our hospital.
Is there a community nearby that does this?
A community that...
Another...
Farmington does.
Farmington?
In the whole state of Illinois.
Whole state?
I'm sure you could talk to the doctors, because the first thing they ask you when you go see them, are you a smoker? Have you ever smoked? So you get statistics from them, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
No, please. No, I insist. So are you asking for us to look into public places? And with that, I'm assuming doesn't impact private? For example, the Legion?
That would be up to you.
Okay.
On to determine...
So you're not stipulating whether it's public or private?
We are not stipulating that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are just looking at, you know, secondaries.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Are we yet the Farmington ordinance?
Yep.
I mean, Mark, you know many communities?
Uh, yes. Nothing recently. There was a push years ago, so we had somewhere in municipalities, but it's been quite a few years since then when they made the push.
Yeah, but there are a number of cities in St. Louis County that have done it.
Yeah, so the other, the short answer is yeah, there's several cities that have adopted various forms and various regulations. As Martin says, doubles in the details.
Yeah.
I mean, by a public place, and what kind of restrictions you want to have, and the distances, and, you know, there's a lot you can do, and a lot of that is a policy decision in the board, and of course, there's competing interests. Private property and private uses as opposed to public health issues, so.
So would the city have to step in and basically name those places?
Well, I think you'd do it more generically.
Right. Because I wouldn't want to have to step in and overrule somebody's current policy.
You would define where it would apply by saying places of public convenience, places that are open to the public, places of public assembly, and just those kinds of terms would be used to define where it would be restricted.
And we could get that verbiage from the other areas or cities, so we could have something to review.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We, as the hospital, are a smoke-free campus. We've been that for five years, Sarah, and what we do is, if we have individuals who smoke, and we notice them on campus at the entryways, nobody smokes in the building pretty much, unless a couple of our patients may sneak in. But when we have visitors and things outside, we will ask them, we will tactfully, diplomatically...
Rita, could I ask you to go up to the podium, so we can...
We will diplomatically, tactfully inform them that we are a smoke-free facility, and we would appreciate their not smoking at our doorways, because we have cancer patients coming into the oncology center and that kind of thing, but we would, you know, off-campus, they're allowed to go down to Pine Street or something like that. Most of them either put it out, or cordially go down to Pine Street and smoke their cigarettes. So it's not been a big deal, I don't think, for us. It's just occasionally. Even though we've got the signs posted, some people need to be reminded. It works for us.
And looking at your, I got a question. Looking at your letter, it says you're contemplating or looking at to, to a tobacco-free hiring policy at the hospital?
Yes, we are.
So if a person smokes, is a smoker, they're, they can't work at the hospital, I take it?
They would not be hired.
Okay.
Yes. And actually, our Board of Trustees just passed that policy on Monday night.
Woo!
It's not implemented as of yet, because as you can see, we have to put a lot of things into place.
Yeah.
But I do see that that will probably be effective, maybe January 1st, that we would no longer be hiring tobacco users.
I'll just step aside.
I'm sure smokers would be great in front of you.
Yes. And this is common, too. I mean, just like I said, we are leading the healthcare industry, but we are not the first. There are healthcare organizations, Perryville County Hospital has done this, all of BJC, so Parkland Health does not hire smokers, Saint Luke's does not hire smokers, Saint Francis Medical Center in Cape Girardeau does not hire smokers.
Now, more specific, smokers or tobacco users?
I'm a, in, in our policy, it will be defined as tobacco user.
Right.
Yes.
So they can vape then, huh?
Nope. Eat cigarettes, okay.
Eat cigarettes or something.
Great question.
Public hearing date?
Yes.
Thursday night works for you guys most of the time? You want to do it?
I think that's a good idea, sir. You guys have to act there.
Yeah, except I'd like to... 20th, huh?
20, 20...
October. Not the 20th. I don't want to try and get it done for the next...
October.
So... We can do it on the 18th? October?
Yes.
We can't do it at our next regular meeting?
No, we're gonna need a...
We need a...
Public meeting, we're gonna have to have a separate, different place.
What would that be?
Well, we did it at Tanvets last time, we had one of the, when we were doing the dog with the...
That was a Legion hall.
Legion hall.
Dangerous animal ordinance, and we held a debate.
Y'all want to set a date?
The 18th doesn't work for people.
Yeah.
Okay.
You say not for you, Buck?
Shooting it in November.
The next off Thursday would be November the 1st.
Yes. It works for me, how about you? Great?
Is that good?
Yes.
Buck?
Yeah, it's fine.
Six o'clock?
I think, yeah, I think we, I think we need to do that probably at 6:30. People need to get home, be able to get home from work. I don't want to, you know, give everybody an opportunity to come to this, whoever wants to come, voice their opinion, so.
All right, 6:30 PM, and we'll advise you to the venue when we get it reserved.
Wonderful.
One more question, so...
Yes, sir.
I know you talked about how you police it on your own campus, but how is it policed out in the public areas?
I'm, I mean, I did read Farmington's city ordinance, and there is a fine.
It's a violation of the ordinance as it's running a stoplight is. If you're observed, you're, you can be given a citation.
So is it more on the honor system, or...
No, it's just... If a restaurant is allowing smoking inside their facility, you know, we would write them a letter, say, you know, it's a violation of the ordinance, please discontinue that practice.
So it's against the facility, not a person?
No, the, the, the person could receive a citation for violating the ordinance.
Could be both.
Could be both, right.
So we have something on the ballot, and we'll address it publicly, and thank you so much for coming.
Yes.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. That takes us to the City Administrator's Report.
Okay, as you may recall, I went to the Missouri Municipal League Annual Conference, and I have attended a number of computer security seminars. I went to this, this one with a guy, was the keynote speaker. He didn't do a PowerPoint. He's a, he's a hacker, and, and who ended up getting hired by the FBI, was doing child pornography cases until he couldn't stand anymore. And they, he retired from the FBI, relatively young age, he's now a consultant, has a website, and he gives these tools that he's developed away free. But he went online on the stage. So what you were watching was him, and he, and he hacked into the hotel's website, went to the website, but got in behind the firewall, picked an employee, found her email address, went to Facebook, found her on Facebook, and from Facebook, ended up getting the computer-coded name for her, and all of a sudden, her whole life was available on screen, and then he turned it off. And he said, "If I went to the next step, I would be violating the law." He said, "It took you about 20 minutes." And he said, "That's, that's, that's how they do it. That's how people infect businesses." They don't do it by going after the business, they do it by going after an employee, because the employees are easy to get to. And then they, they come in through the, through the back door. So aside from scaring my pants off, the first time, he gave us some practical solutions that we can employ in, in the office, such as, don't sign up for anything, no memberships, no groups from your work computer. Use your phone to, if you have a cellphone, to do any of that kind of thing, because hackers aren't interested in cellphone, because the data's so limited. And the, have a separate password for every website. How many of you have the same password for more than one website? You know, the whole room, everybody does that. And he said, "And then use, and then use a password management app," and, because you can't keep track of all those things, but you can, and he said, "They're good, they're free ones, and, and they're good." So he went on, I mean, I'm just, I, I was just amazed. I went to his website and tried to figure out, you know, some of the things he was talking about, but, so we're implementing some of those policies here, and that, that was a good thing to learn. The other thing that I attended that I thought was of noteworthy value was the active assailant protocol. We already, we, the chief and the sheriff's department, you know, they, they train the Alice techniques. And we're, in our revisions that we're getting ready to make to City Hall, we're going to create that safe foyer, so the people who handle money aren't exposed to the public when they first walk in the door. But I think I'm going to impose on the law enforcement community to do the Alice training for, for the City Hall, and, and we would, we would benefit from that. We have scheduled a meeting on the TIF revisions for October the 4th at 6:00 PM, you may have already known that. The, I've received two requests so far for sequestration of buildings, I expect one more, at least one more. Sent letters to property owners of commercial properties, ones that would potentially generate sales tax, even if they aren't currently generating sales tax, informing them of their options so that they can communicate by calling me ahead of the meeting, or come to the meeting to discuss whether or not they want to be considered for that, that treatment. I was going to report on the water tower, but Dave Van Leer is here from Cochran, so I'm going to give him some of my time to report on the progress of the water tower.
I'm David Van Leer from Cochran, we're the civil engineer on the tank project. Martin, do they have the report that we put together?
No.
If not, is it okay if I hand some out?
Sure, hand them out. Not Alliance, it's Cochran.
While those are, while those are making their way down, I'll...
Everybody's involved in water, wears blue.
I'll get started. As you're aware, at the June board meeting, you awarded the tank contract to Phoenix Fabricators, and the project was awarded as a 300,000 gallon multi-leg tank. Phoenix Fabricators was issued a notice to proceed on August 2nd, which started the contract. Currently, foundation, the tank foundation is under construction, and at this point is essentially complete. If you flip to the second page of the handout I gave you, you'll see pictures of the foundation construction. The top picture, you're seeing the excavation, and the five spread footings for the tank legs, as well as the center column. Those, those, the spread footings you're looking at are approximately 14 by 14, and they're, they're about 12 feet deep in the ground. So it's a pretty big excavation out there, and some pretty big footings. The lower picture's the same thing, just as they're pouring the concrete. On top of the spread footings, they bring a column up on top of each footing, which is what the tank structure sits on top of. And as of, as of now, those columns are poured on top of the spread footings. As the foundation is completed, they'll begin the tank structure. Currently on site, they are welding together pieces of the tank, I don't believe any of it has started going up yet, but the tank, steel for the tank is on site. The contractor's looking at having the tank structure up within four to six weeks, which would put us at mid-November. And at that point, the contractor's going to evaluate if they'll be able to paint the tank this year, or if they'll need to wait until the spring of 19. Painting, obviously, is dependent on weather and temperature, so that's kind of something left to play by year. The contractor does have until April 3rd of 2019 to finish the project. That concludes the report I had. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or give any other information.
We're gonna put the city's name on the tank facing Highway 32.
Right.
We planned to paint it white with black lettering. That can change. Different color doesn't cost...
Yeah, the, as Martin says, the plan is white with black block lettering.
I've got a question. Where, when do you start, Steve, with the water, with water going to it?
The water line that'll, that'll be next to the driveway going up to the towers, next to the access road, once the tower's nearing completion and their equipment's out of the way, we'll tie onto a ductile iron pipe at the base of the tower, on a stub that sticks five feet out from the base, and then we'll run that line down to Progress Parkway.
But the, the water line work is not take, won't take very long.
No, it's about 600 feet of, of the water line, so.
Thanks. Thank you very much. So the mayor and I went to the annual meeting of the CMO Regional Planning and Economy Development. It's more of a formality than anything where they have to adopt their annual budgets and all of that, but it's good to see people from other jurisdictions. The park board folks left, not sure why, but I did go to the park board meeting, and there wasn't any, any new, anything really new there, except they are working to set up that not-for-profit, and that's independent of the park board itself, but the park board members are working towards that end, and they've received the paperwork, and they're talking about how to raise the money, and we've got some people volunteered to pay the filing fees, and so that's, that's moving along. I secured an easement for Chadwell Lane from Mr. Reem, Rem. Reem, he was very cooperative. The, I've met with the gas company and trade investors company, which is, it's the local folks that own the storage units there on the corner. Well, I haven't heard back from the gas company, they're not going to object to it, but they are going to have relocation issues, where they have to move things. The, and I met with trade investors today, and again, they're not, they're going to support it, but they have a couple of accommodations they'd like to see. And so I was, neither the gas company nor they and I can address those issues until we have the profiles and the, and the grades, and to see where the, how the, how the road's going to be adjusted. But I don't, I don't foresee any problem eventually getting that done. Prior to tonight, I met with Sarah Kelly, and I don't want to reiterate the smoking issue, but they're also being, undertaking some things that will promote recreational activities in the community. But one of the things they want to do is put some mileage markers on Progress Parkway, not mileage, but distance measurements, just painted on the sidewalk. So I didn't think that would require board action, and it would help people know how far they've walked, and I think it's a good idea, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think if they're going to do that, we ought to, ought to just let them do it. And then I pledged that we would cooperate in any way we could with any of the other things that they may have planned to get our citizens moving. I had the paving workers nearing completion, the paving work is complete. The last stretch of road, Mary Will, was done almost half an hour before the meeting. I went over to check, and they were pulling out. So they got, they got it done in time, and, and they'll bill us, and they'll get them in this year's budget, and so then try and carry over to next, and it's all worked out fine. I mentioned to you before the issue about the property on the joint levy commission, and the mayor's going to have to appoint, okay. One of the problems is, is I was doing the research, was trying to find if the joint levy commission is going to deed property to the city, what's the legal description of the property? And that's kind of problematic, because there's now a levy sitting on top of the property that was deeded, and we're going to have to figure out how to get the levy district to retain title to the levy footprint, and get the other stuff transferred out. I talked to Dave Weber at the title company, and he sent me to Zoner, Associates and Engineering and Surveying Company in, in Perryville, because they did the survey work for the levy. So I talked to Mike Zoner and said, "Here's my problem." And he said, "Well, I gotta go find a box, I'll let you know." So he's doing the research for me to see if we can maybe get this, this done based on the field work that they did back then, rather than having to put a crew in the field and come up with new definitions. So I'll be reporting back on that when I get that information. Finally, this didn't make the, the report, but you'll, you'll be seeing it at our next meeting. AT&amp;T wants to put up a tower up by the radio section. They want to put it on property that the city owns, and they want us to grant them an easement for that purpose. They've sent me that the documents, I forwarded them to Mark, he'll have an opportunity to review them between now and then. It doesn't define by legal description the property yet, because they want to make sure that we're amenable to the idea before they go to the work of defining exactly the site, but it's 100 square feet, it's 10 by 10. It will be a cell tower, so it will improve reception in the city of Saint Genevieve. And I... And I think it's going to be in an area we don't maintain. I'm going to end up recommending we do it, but I wanted to let you know that it's coming and see if anybody has any specific objection to it.
Just a quick question. Will we be leasing that property then, or will they be purchasing it? How's that word?
I think it reads as a lease.
I haven't looked at it. A lease would be good.
I just got it today.
Well, it'll take me a minute to find it.
I think it's a lease. They did that on my grandmother's farm.
Pardon me?
They did that on my grandmother's farm in Michigan.
Well, it's always a lease.
It's a lease. That's good stuff. Oh, yes, brings in some money.
Good money.
I like it.
Well, okay, so I had that to report to them.
Isn't there some kind of income that?
Well, that's what the lease does.
Yes. Better reception and some money.
That completes my report. Unless you have any questions?
Yes. Anything for the park board? Lauren back there?
I see her there.
Hi.
I said I went to the park board, but all the members ran out on me, so...
I know. I just wanted to talk to Sandy for a moment, and I missed what you had to say.
What did you have to say about it?
That there are a group of fine, dedicated citizens who are trying to make our community better.
Good answer. They are, and that's the truth.
All we want is a playground and a wider walking path.
Yeah, you and I both. I would love to see that. Martin is going to get a bid on that. Where's the bid on that?
Is that stuff on time or in the park?
No, it would be behind the radio station property, off Mitchell Road.
She's thinking that income of the park.
Yeah.
That's used.
Oh, we did start a nonprofit, we are now a nonprofit entity, so if any money that we make...
If you're going to speak, you're going to need to come up.
Yeah, come on up.
It's not official yet, but you're working on it.
Yes, we're working on it. I'm Lauren Smothers, park board serums lady. Yeah, we just had all the application filled out. The monies were given to the application, so as soon as that kicks in is nice, because as you well know, the park gets hardly any money at all. So anything we want to raise money for, we like to keep it in our own pockets so we can do what we want. My main thing, and I've been here, I guess it was probably eight years ago, is a playground up in that park. That's my main goal, to do that. The widening of the path would be great, some exercise equipment sprinkled throughout it. That's why we're hoping to get some grants maybe from the hospital on good fitness, good health.
That's a good thought. They're wanting to do some of that. That would be outstanding.
Right. Also, we had thought about maybe in the corner where the old waiting pool used to be, just have all the fitness equipment in one area, so people don't have to be committed to a one-mile path just to work out on equipment. We just want to encourage movement, help, not everyone sitting on a bench on their cellphones while their kids play. We want to just incorporate a really natural park with creative play and mindfulness and participation. And we would be gracious to this community if they'd pitch into us, and not always the community center. Thank you very much.
We may want to talk to Sarah Kelly up at the hospital, because they're doing all kinds of stuff for recreation, too.
Right. I think that's why part of us were here. We thought that might have been brought up.
So I'm sorry I missed this last meeting, but let's make that happen.
Okay.
I'm on the friends board, so I can talk to them.
And you know, I'll be honest, I know nothing about grants, and I know nothing about all this. I just really am passionate about getting a playground up in that beautiful park that's not being used, and it's just a great setting. We would like to put it where the old pool used to be. I would like kind of a river, natural theme, instead of just metal and slides and stairs. I mean, there's not much thinking there. So we've been looking into a lot of natural scapes and slides and stuff like that, so anybody can help me, let us know. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So one of the problems that we face is that the granting agencies for parks are targeting populations. So, you know, if you have a lot of income people, then you can get a grant for a park. Or if a certain ethnic group is benefited, you get a grant for a park. But just general money for public parks is not readily available. But we can't look too like wholesome funds.
Mississippi line, maybe they would be like...
Yeah, local, yes.
The hospital with their new recreation thing?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Steve?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's see here. The utility service group that painted the Maxwell Hill Tower, I don't know if anybody drove by there, still a trailer laying on the ground, pretty much?
What's up with that?
The legs collapsed after they unhooked the truck when they started the project, and they had to wait till they removed the material that was still in the trailer before they could pick the trailer up. There's supposed to be a crew in tomorrow morning to start the removal process. Their goal is to have it out of there before the end of the weekend.
I've gotten some complaints about that.
Yeah, yeah, so have I. I've called them numerous times. I've spoke with Martin about it as well.
I'm one of the ones who's been complaining to him about it.
Yeah. So, but they are, they are supposed to be here tomorrow, so keep an eye out. Let's see, the, of course, the UV system overflowed. I briefed you guys on that last time. Representative from Ozonea, or the Suez Group was onsite yesterday and today, taking panels apart, boxes apart, assessing all the damage that was done. I should have that report sometime early next week. Pam, I'll get it to you and the insurance company as well.
Yeah, we did notify the insurance company, obviously, so we don't have a cost yet. There's no claim has been filed, but they're on notice.
Let's see, a couple of water leaks. We had a couple on Washington and one up on the port. The leak on Washington was not the same leak. It was actually two separate leaks, about a week apart. It just looked like it was in the same hole.
Hey, you made a mess of our street there.
Contact the street superintendent. Once we fill them in, it's on him.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
It's pretty busy. Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Sandra, where's Sandra? There she is.
Right here.
Hi, Sandra, how are you today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I just got back from the Missouri statewide tourism conference, and every year, when I go, it's always the governor's tourism conference, and always on the last day, there's a lunch, and the governor is slated to come and talk. And governors are busy people, and they don't always have time to come and meet that obligation. Well, today, we actually had Governor Parson there, and I can tell you, he's very committed to economic development, workforce development, tourism, and building stronger communities. He was very open about how important this is to a strong Missouri. So this is my tourism and welcome center report. So since the last meeting, well, I have some notes there about how many guests we've had so far in the month of September. Over 1,800 guests and 250 tour guests. That included three dates by the American Queen Riverboat. Passports are at 85 for the month and seven students. September was a very busy month. If you are out and about and you're involved in your community, you know that there were events every single weekend in the month of September sponsored by various local civic organizations, and on some weekends, there were even more than one. Last weekend, the Foundation for Restoration had their fall history conference with a record attendance. On Friday, before the history conference, we hosted a special guest speaker at the Welcome Center. He was a professional builder, a restorer of historic properties, and he has studied, well, he really specializes in hewn timber structures. So, of course, you know, our buildings here are vertical log, hewn timbers, but if you think about every barn you've ever seen on every farm in Missouri, every one of those is a hewn timber construction, unless they're a newer model. And he goes all over the country studying these and restoring these. So if you ever see that cable show about the barn restorers, where they go out and they like raise up the timbers, that's the kind of thing that he does. Or if a section of a barn is rotted out, they take the rotted section out and they put in the new timbers. It was really fascinating, and I included on the back of the alderman's report, I included information that he studied in particular the unique character of the French colonial architecture that we have here in St. Genevieve. And of course, everyone here knows that in 1811 and '12, we had the largest earthquake that the middle part of this country has ever seen, a magnitude eight on the Richter scale, and there were four quakes during that 16-month period. And 200 years after that quake, several of these French colonial homes are still standing, which is pretty amazing when you think about what happens in California when they had a earthquake of four or five, or heaven forbid, six. So he really gave a very interesting presentation. There were a number of local visitors there, and I think they all enjoyed it very much. And if you want any more information about that topic, just let me know. As you all know, on August 31st, we hosted an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding Signing Ceremony. Senator Blunt was here, Representative Jason Smith, as well as several representatives from the National Park Service Regional Office, and signing agreements, including with the city, the county, and our various local entities that own properties that will be involved or tangent to the National Park Historic Site. The Tourism Tax Commission met on September 18th. I participated in meetings with the Downtown Renewal Group, the Art Walk Discussion, and by the way, tomorrow night is the September 4th, Friday, Art Walk, and with the Christmas Festival Planning Committee. So although it's September, it's not too early to start thinking about Christmas. And I know many of our local organizations participate in the parade on Saturday for that, and you should know that the dates will be September, or excuse me, December 8th and 9th this year, so be sure, if you're involved in a local civic organization that has a float or a band or anything like that, make sure you know those dates. And I have flyers here. I didn't want to pass them out to everyone, but if you're interested and you would like one of these to put in your place of business, this is a flyer about the first-ever Oktoberfest in St. Genevieve, celebrating our extensive German heritage here. So if you want to participate in that, it's going on Saturday all day. In the morning, part of Main Street will be closed for bed races, which is actually a health fundraiser. There will be, I guess, some of the police department and sheriff department and the hospital will be participating and competing against each other to push a bed down the street, which apparently is a big deal. I've never seen it before. It'll be interesting to see what it looks like, so we'll see you Saturday if you're interested in participating in that community event. Any questions? Okay, I have copies of these afterwards if anyone wants one for their workplace or place of business.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good evening, brother.
I will try to keep this brief. I don't have much on the report. Probably most notable, we did lose an officer, and we'll be accepting applications to try to fill that position. We have gotten our handheld radar in that you guys requested and supported and have been using that and trying to slow people down in the school zones, so it seems to be helping, hopefully. I talked to Martin earlier in the week. We're still working on getting everything together to put our project out to bid for the remodel. One of the questions that we had is, with this room, we're proposing removing this wall completely, so it would go down to the wall against City Hall, and seeing if you guys would like a permanent structure to fill the area, have like one long council bench either facing either way, and then open, which would eliminate the table, open up more room for seating, which is one of the concerns with the courtroom, not having enough seating, there's standing room only. One of Martin's concerns was losing the table for all of the other functions that we have here, meetings and whatnot. There may be space, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Martin, where Mr. Bova's spaces now, I mean, if we could look at relocating some of that, maybe putting in a conference room over there, putting the table over there for a meeting room, but more than anything, I just wanted to get your feel for if you would be in favor of having some type of permanent structure.
And I think my concern could be accommodated by readily available folding tables, you know, as long as the space is there.
They have a lot of boards that meet in this room.
We do.
But there are not that many people.
Well, not often, but from time to time, we have this size group.
Yeah.
But again, I think it's just a matter of having the resources to accommodate, to use in the little preparation.
Yeah.
What do you think, the idea of having a ward of aldermen dais, raised?
Similar to our bench there, but long enough to seat everybody and have where you would be addressing the crowd.
I like that idea. Put microphones out there and hear everybody very well.
Mayor, city minister, and the alderman.
I would assume, yeah, maybe some kind of semi-horseshoe type design, yeah. If we went with the plan, either plan, I would propose another egress, just so should something happen, you need to get out quickly, have an egress into City Hall, but if there's nobody opposed to that, I will certainly look into that.
You got to accommodate Pam and Martin.
Absolutely, absolutely. They'll have the best seat in the house.
Usually staff sits in front of the board, so that you can address the board.
I believe that's all I had to report. Anybody have any questions? We've been busy. We've had the task force, the Missouri State Highway Patrol Drug Task Force in town the last few days, and have made a couple of pretty substantial cases, I think, that hopefully will be hit in the paper soon. I had actually spoken with Aldermen's Mooney and Smith about having them here to address the board on kind of a state-of-the-city's narcotics standpoint, I guess. They were slated until yesterday, when they called and said they were not going to be able to make it today. So it's certainly something that we can revisit in the future, just to kind of give you guys an idea or maybe an impartial view of how things are in the city, so it's certainly something we'll try to get scheduled.
Be a good segue, too, with this. I put it in front of the alderman. This lady's going to be coming on October 2nd. It's, she does a real, she was here before, and she does a great job of helping us to educate and understand this process, especially this opioid epidemic that's going on right now.
Is this the same one that Bill Kramer?
Yes. It's the same girl. It'll be at the First Baptist Church on, it's 5:00. I know it's kind of early, but with this schedule, we had to schedule it like that. We're hoping to, you know, to get more education on it, and Eric went to it, and it's pretty interesting, and help you better understand how to deal with it and the problems we have with it, and be beneficial for all you guys to go to this if you'd like, you know, so you have a good understanding of it. Because this crisis costs us money, you know? We spend a lot of time with officers in and out, you know, just last week, we went to, they had this opioid lawsuit that's coming about. You know, I went to that meeting. Eric was at that meeting about suing these manufacturers, and it's a lot, it's pretty interesting. And the amount of, you know, it's taxing for your ambulance district, your police, you know, so their ideas to go out, go after these guys that are freely distributing these opioids, knew that they were going to be harmful, so this is on the radar to do. What does your boss, Ray Stiglott, do?
I'm not sure. I believe he still lives in town, but he resigned and will be seeking employment in the city. I believe he's looking at U-City, is my understanding.
Have we had any decisions recently as far as overdoses?
Yeah, we had one a couple of weeks ago. They had one today out in the county.
Oh, wow.
There was one last night out in the county. I don't know that it was opioid-related, but yeah, it's certainly still going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any committee reports? Joe, you have anything for planning and zoning?
Mayor, I don't know if this is the proper place to do it, but can I ask Gary a few questions while we're...
Sure.
Sorry, can you?
Gary?
Sorry to drag you up there.
He says, "So I can answer questions."
Right. Gary's had a few questions from some, things I heard from some constituencies out there. The pump that we purchased to clear out that, like that space down there at Second and Jefferson, I had an understanding of why it wasn't deployed during the rain thing recently, but I was not able to express that apparently to clearly enough to people. So can you kind of explain that situation?
Sure. It was actually in the process of being deployed. The sewer department had to use it that morning with problems they had on their, these beds down there. And once they got it done, they was tearing it down to bring it up, but by that time, the water.
It wasn't a longstanding water event.
No. And that pump with the amount of water that was there, you know, it's going to drop naturally quicker than you can pump it.
Right.
I mean, it was a nine-inch rain, and it's a bowl. It had nowhere to go.
Right. Okay, and then the, there was a lively discussion about mosquitoes recently.
They're everywhere.
I don't know if anybody caught that or not, but I expressed my opinion that the mass spraying of airborne pesticides is not necessarily the way to go, and it's been proven ineffective and dangerous. And if you could comment a little bit on our city's mosquito control efforts and...
We've been treating standing water with the Larbicide biscuits. Water only has to be treated once it's standing five days. If it's disturbed within that five days, it, you know, destroys the cycle of them. So we've just been keeping up with trying to throw them in ditches, and that's the biggest thing, everybody makes sure there's no standing water around their house. Weeds are terrible for mosquitoes, they hold moisture.
And it appears that there's a larger variety of mosquito recently that has been around.
Yep.
Have you noticed this?
How many?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they're like the size of a small bird.
Yeah. I believe it's the...
They have shadows.
They're huge. The Asian tiger mosquito?
I don't know what it is.
I did a research. Yeah, they're big. And but the, the old days where they used to drive the truck down the street, and I remember a gentleman once telling me that you'd kill more mosquitoes shooting a shotgun off the back of that thing than you will by...
It only kills what it contacts in the air. You know, it's not something in blankets or, you know, it's direct contact.
So the way I understand it, the policies and procedures that we're following are the, this is what's recommended by everybody who's in knowledge of mosquito control.
Yeah.
And I distributed that report.
Yeah.
Not the last one, the one I remember. On the, the hottest technology.
I was in Crystal City a couple nights ago. They spray three times a week, and they's just as bad there as they are here.
What about bat houses?
Those bat houses in the park, and they're still bad up there, are they?
Martin's got something to add to this?
Well, just, it's the future. It's not available now, but the studies that are being done on is genetically modifying the male mosquitoes and introducing them into the population. So now you have breeding and unable to reproduce, if you're progeny or unable to reproduce. The big question is, do you want to get rid of all mosquitoes? And the answer is, no, you don't. You want to get rid of the mosquitoes that carry disease, which West Nile is one of the things that you're concerned about, is, and so that you wouldn't be getting rid of all mosquitoes, just the ones that bite. And apparently, there's a whole nother population of mosquitoes out there that don't bite us. So, but of course, that's raising all sorts of kind of environmental issues. If you eliminate a breed, what's the impact? And the last study I read said, there's no discernible impact as long as you're not wiping out the whole species.
Thanks, Gary.
All right. Gary, I have one quick question for you. I know you're working hard on this, and I appreciate it. You guys do fantastic work. I was asked again, what's going on with the lights on South Market?
There's a problem, either a bad pole or a bad wires in the ground.
The whole, the whole street?
It's, yep.
Okay.
There's each, there's like four banks come off each direction, so, you know, what's out right now is one total bank, so it just keeps throwing a breaker out. So it's a real process of elimination, and usually, more is equals do that, and they're swamped right now, too, so.
Thank you kindly, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
Are there any public comments?
Do you know, has any of the...
Up to the podium, please.
Has any of the, I know recent, you know, surrounding counties, Sophia Reeves, about the mosquito issue, I was probably one of the ones that had mentioned it on Facebook, and that's where it all started.
We had discussion, that's right. Discussion is good.
Well, and the only problem I'm having, I mean, I go outside my door. I can't go outside a whole lot. I go out, boom. I've been in the hospital several times because of this mosquito bite, turns into cellulitis. I have to get treated with IV antibiotics. So that was my issue. Okay, they're so bad this year, is there something we can do differently to maybe cut down on the mosquitoes? I don't know if it's more rain this year that's making them...
I would think that's, that's pretty much the case.
I mean, they're not as bad the last couple days, and I think because the weather is getting cooler.
Yeah, it's cooler.
It's kind of, yeah.
For some reason, everybody's talking about the drought in Missouri.
It's not here.
It didn't hit St. Genevieve, because we've been getting rain every three or four days, maybe not a lot, but enough to keep the mosquitoes going.
Right, it's been really bad. And I know surrounding counties have tested positive for West Nile, so I don't know if anything local has been tested or anything like that, but I don't know.
I think the best, and I said it before, is the best thing people can do is to make sure they don't have things that are holding water in their backyard, because it only takes a few days of water sitting in a thing.
Bird baths, fountains that aren't on just anything.
Water cans.
Water cans.
Anything.
Anything.
Yeah, gutters.
And then Gary says you put lavender on, lavender oil. They don't like that, I'm guessing.
Let me tell you, I've been bathing in bug spray, going outside, and it's like, okay. I went out yesterday, I did pretty good, nothing. So we'll see. I think the cooler weather's helping.
I hope so. I hope so. They are bad.
But I stand by my statement that spraying toxic chemicals all over town is not the way to go.
What was that? Was that? Oh, that was Randy's idea, lavender.
The lavender?
Now, do you put lavender oil on, Randy?
No, sir.
Oh.
We have lavender plants in our backyard, and it works.
Why not? Why wouldn't you put it on? You can buy them.
It might essential, really. It might.
You try that?
Lavender? No.
Well, you'll smell good.
Lavender, I can check into it.
It is, really.
It's almost getting too late now, though.
No.
Yeah, I think we're about to...
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Here's the closed session notes.
Okay, closed session notes. We're passing out the, our closed session notes. Need to bring them, send them back after you read them. Okay, move to approve and consent agenda.
Sen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That takes us to old business, which takes us to the second reading of Bill Number forty-two, forty-one, An Ordnance Approving the Budget for the City of St. Genevieve for Fiscal Year 2019. That will take a roll call vote. I'm sorry, yes. We have a motion?
Motion.
Now we'll have a roll call vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
No.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
No.
Six yes, two no's. Bill Number forty-two, forty-one now becomes ordinance forty-one, seventy-three.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill Number forty-two, forty-two, An Ordnance Amending the Original Agreement with Thoenock Wade &amp; Morton Incorporated to Provide a Web-Based Mapping Platform and Geographic Information System for the City of St. Genevieve. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two, forty-three, An Ordnance Approving Memorandum of Agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to Modify the Initial Professional Service Agreement dated August twelfth, twenty-ten.
Motion to approve.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Bill Number forty-two, forty-four, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri Authorizing a No Parking Restriction on the South Side of Progress Parkway, starting at the entrance to the Progress Sports Complex and extending two hundred and sixty feet east towards State Highway M.
Move through, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two, forty-five, An Ordnance Amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Sections one-thirty, point zero-three-zero, Municipal Judge Office Created Election Term, and one-thirty, point oh-four-oh, Municipal Judge Qualifications as set forth below.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two, forty-six, An Ordnance Approving a Proposal from Schulte Supply Incorporated for the Purchase of a Meter Reading Equipment and Software for the Utility Billing System, Amount Not to Exceed Seventy-nine Hundred Dollars. Martin?
And before it... The old equipment that we had, it broke, it's old, they don't service it anymore. They don't have replacement parts for, we kind of limped through for a couple of months, borrowing pieces, and finally, the last of our meter reading devices shut down. They came in this month with their own and read the meters, but we need to, that's why it's kind of being put on as an emergency purchase item.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get a, please get a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor of that reading?
Aye.
So that takes us to Bill Number forty-two, forty-six, An Ordnance Approving a Proposal from Schulte Supply Incorporated for the Purchase of a Meter Reading Equipment and Software for the Utility Billing System, in the Amount Not to Exceed Seventy-nine Hundred Dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number forty-two, forty-six now becomes ordinance forty-one, seventy-four.
Thank you very much. Takes us to Bill Number forty-two, forty-seven.
Also requires explanation.
Explanation. An ordinance, well, you want to explain it first?
No, I'll go ahead and read it.
An ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of St. Genevieve to enter into a Participation Agreement for the Missouri Chamber Federation Benefit Plan Trust.
Okay, I mentioned to you that we were pursuing this option for our health insurance. It's a health insurance option. Normally, we get a health insurance renewal, and we renew it and take the best of the options that are presented to us. This, however, is a little different from just buying an insurance policy, and that's why I chose to put it on, on the agenda for an ordinance, because you're authorizing us to join this trust as a member of the group. And it will realize, instead of a six percent increase in insurance, which we were facing with our, with a private insurance company, a twelve percent reduction in our insurance rate. The difference between what we have budgeted and what this is going to cost us is about sixty thousand dollars. So it certainly was worth considering, but here's how it works. This is the reason I wanted to make sure that everybody understood it. We join the group. We send in our premiums, which are based on our population and the demographics and all of that, the census. Everybody else does the same thing. The trust then makes payments from those revenues against any claims that come in, like any other insurance company does. The issue that is different here is what happens if the trust is mismanaged, or what happens if there are more claims than there is revenue? You know, what's the risk associated with that? Well, to mitigate that risk, the trust buys a secondary insurance policy through Anthem. And Anthem then commits to cover any shortages. We, by our agreement with this, which has been reviewed by the attorney, will be liable for any health insurance claims should Anthem go out of business. So the risk, and there is no cap on Anthem's participation, so they don't stop making payments if it gets to be ten million dollars. The only outside risk is if the trust were to fail and Anthem were to fail, then we would be responsible for claims on, health claims for our employees, so there's a bit of self-insurance involved. But if we keep the budget as we have adopted it, we have that sixty thousand dollar cushion to guard against that I consider very remote possibility. So there is a little risk. It's negligible, in my opinion. Mark has reviewed the document and is of the opinion that we can't enter into it. That's kind of another question I had, because we're joining this trust, and so it's legal for us to do, and we save sixty thousand dollars, and that's what I know.
So who's the other participants in this trust?
Other members of Chambers of Commerce. You have to be a Chamber of Commerce member.
With our terms coming now, Anthem, isn't it?
United Healthcare.
Wasn't going to stay with United Healthcare, though. It was going to, in order to get the six percent increase, we're going to have to change insurance companies.
No, it's going to, that was with, that was keeping with United Healthcare, and the benefits were going, they were going to be worse for the employees.
This, this, this is better, except for, I think, what's the copay, is a little bit increase in one of the, one of the items, but it's a, it's a better, better benefit at the same, at reduced cost.
I think this is a great idea.
So is this administered through a local agency, or, you know, because there's always...
The trust hires a company for administration. It's a, it's a nationwide trust, so they hire a company that administers the assets of the trust.
In your expert opinion, it's the right thing to do?
I would, it wouldn't be before you if I didn't think it was the right thing to do.
You know, there's always a lot of questions that come up for the employees and stuff when it comes to healthcare. They turn in, you know, they go for a procedure, there's bills, there's, you know, but we would have a viable agency to talk to.
Our local likeness is still, it will still handle that for us.
Okay.
They will still be our go-to for that.
Move through, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a second, please.
Move for a second, second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Bill Number forty-two, forty-seven, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of St. Genevieve to Enter to the Participation Agreement for the Missouri Chamber Federation Benefit Plan Trust.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?[1747.12]